Good evening. The November 4th, 2024 legislative session of the Anarundel County Council is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silent. We will now have the invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Ms. Hummer.
Please pray according to your custom as I pray according to mine. Dear God, in this election season, we ask that you carry our nation close to your heart. We pray for protection for all political candidates and their families. We pray specifically against violence at political rallies, polling places, debates, or other places where many are gathered. May we become a nation that turns our weapons into plowshares, taking on your posture of nonviolence. We submit to you our thoughts, feelings, and frustrations about the candidates we disagree with. May we not look at them with contempt, but maybe we be reminded that they too are created in your image. When we find ourselves tempted to dismiss others' thoughts and experiences, create in us the ability to seek understanding rather than to pronounce judgment, as well as the ability to see the humanity in others. We ask for the ability to hear and consider the perspectives of those with whom we disagree. Cultivate in us the ability to compassionately and clearly articulate our convictions. Give us the humility that is needed to work for all people, not just those who think or look like us. Direct the next President of the United States with a heart for justice and truth. In your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that, under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4412.
Thank you. Before we open our discussions and public hearings, I would like to remind everyone in attendance that we must maintain decorum at all times within these chambers. Please understand that individual conversations in the audience are very disruptive to proceedings, and I would kindly ask you to step out of the chambers if a side discussion is necessary. We will now open our invitation to audience. This is an opportunity to speak briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received three pieces, but one piece was for Bill Number 7324, which the public hearing has now been closed, but they have all been shared with the council, added to the record, and posted on the website.
Thank you. We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. I have Michael Brown, Jim Bonjorno, and Scott, Matt Schofield. Are any of you here this evening? Come forward, please. I don't see Michael Brown or Mr. Schofield. Is anyone else here this evening that wants to offer testimony during the invitation to audience portion of our meeting? Okay, thank you. Sir, go ahead.
Ciao. My name is Jim Bonjorno. I live across the street from Gork Park in Odenton. And back before the council again because the field lights are still shining brightly on empty fields at Gork Park, and I have not heard anything from the county staff since my testimony on October 21st. So let me tell you a little story. I took my six-year-old granddaughter for a walk through Gork Park the other day, and the field lights quickly caught her eye. Why are the lights on during the day, Papa? Please, don't let me get started, granddaughter. But I want to know, Papa. How could I refuse? I told my granddaughter how I've tried for nearly six months to improve the field light management at the park. However, the county staff has refused to take appropriate action, even though I volunteered my time to help. I provided many pictures of empty fields being lit. However, the county staff won't decide whether or not the rules have been violated. Just as bad, over the past month, their attitude has been, "Don't call us, we'll call you." That's mean, Papa. Why do you still pick up the litter in Gork Park every day if they are being so mean to you? Well, granddaughter, I pick up the litter because that's what good neighbors do. Hopefully, the county council will encourage the county staff to be good neighbors too. Capisce? Capisce, Papa? Ladies and gentlemen, please see my online testimony for new evidence that this problem has still not been resolved. In fact, it's gotten worse because of the time change. The lights are now coming on earlier, well before the practices start, so the lights and the taxpayers are paying much more money to light these empty fields at Gork Park. The solution is easy. If the staff would just work with me and my neighbors, we could solve this problem just like that. And with that, bonanotte.
Thank you. Sir?
Good evening, Madam Chair and County Council members. My name is Jim Holman. I reside at 1546 Meyer Station Road in Odenton, Maryland. I'm here tonight to address a noise issue where, in my opinion, our county government has failed to enforce their own ordinances, code, and laws on multiple occasions. My question to you tonight is why do some entities get to skirt the law while others are penalized? I have sent an email to my councilperson, County Executive Office, and Special Events at Anarundel County on October 31st, 2024. I received two responses, one from James Jones, our new community engagement officer, and the second from my county councilperson, Julie Hummer. There was a noise disturbance bill, Bill Number 26-21, introduced by Mike Volk by the county council on March 1st, 2021. It was approved on April 5th, 2021, enacted on April 14th, 2021, with an effective date of May 29, 2021. And this bill states noise, live band played at a high level is a violation and subject to a fine. However, with that being said, there's no mention of a max decibel reading for noise that would help enforce this violation. Also, our police department would need to be outfitted, trained, and certified in the use of a decibel reading device. These devices will also need to be calibrated and certified. The property owner, Gustavo Ortizes, his ranch is Ranchera de Las Migas, is located at 1529 Meyer Station Road in Odenton, Maryland. He has had multiple violations of holding events on the property with blaring loud music. My house is approximately one-half mile from when these events occur, and I have recorded between 62 and 65 decibel levels on my front deck. That is absolutely ridiculous.
Thank you, sir.
I'm not done yet.
Your two minutes is gone up. The buzzer just went off. Thank you.
Can I give a copy of this, please?
Yes.
There you go. Thank you very much.
The invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda at this time? May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
Same.
Is there a second?
Ravi, in second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of October 21st, 2024.
The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Pickard at 7:05 PM. It was opened with the invocation given by Ms. Pickard and was followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Annapolis, Maryland.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of October 21st, 2024?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Ledbetter, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of October 21st, 2024 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 8624, An Ordnance Concerning Approval of Cable Franchises Star Power Communications LLC Doing Business as Astound Broadband Comcast of Maryland LLC and Verizon Maryland LLC. Bill Number 8724, An Ordnance Concerning Current Expense Budget Supplementary Appropriation Severn Grove Special Community Benefit District. Bill Number 8824, An Ordnance Concerning the Authorization of the Issuance, Sale, and Delivery by Anarundel County, Maryland From Time to Time of Special Taxing District Obligation Refunding Bonds and an Aggregate Principal Amount Not to Exceed $30 Million to be Secured by Special Taxes to Refund All or a Portion of the County's Special Tax District Bonds, the Villages at Two Rivers Project Series 2014, and the Determination of Certain Terms and Provisions in Connection with the Issuance, Sale, and Payment of Such Bonds. Bill Number 8924, An Ordnance Concerning Current Expense Budget Board of Education Supplementary Appropriation. Bill Number 9024, An Ordnance Concerning Capital Budget and Program Roads and Bridges, Traffic Control, Board of Education, and Recreation and Parks Capital Projects Supplementary and Transfer of Appropriations. Bill Number 9124, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Requirements for Conditional Uses Home Occupations. Bill Number 9224, An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety Miscellaneous Provisions, Plastic Bags Prohibited.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
There are no resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Oh, perfect.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. May I be added as co-sponsor on 9224? Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Volkey, thank you.
Madam Chair, may I also be added as co-sponsor to 9224?
Yes, Ms. Feedler, thank you.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 47-24.
Resolution Number 4724, Resolution Supporting the Anarundel County Board of Education's Fiscal Year 2026 Public School Construction Capital Improvement Program Request for Submission to the Interagency Commission on School Construction.
This is an administration resolution. Mr. Hunt, when your team is assembled, you may have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have our Budget Director, Chris Trumbauer, Kyle Ruffin, Bill Heiser from the Anarundel County Public Schools, and Greg Swain from the Office of Law. This is an annual resolution that we do approving the county's school system's capital budget request for its capital improvement program to the State Interagency Committee on School Construction. There is one amendment we can discuss at the appropriate time, but I'll turn it over to the public school folks if they want to add anything about what is in the CIP request.
Kyle Ruff, Director of Facilities. Public school requests for this year includes funding from the state for the Old Mill High School complex, as well as several systemic projects throughout the county.
Are there any questions from my colleagues regarding Resolution 47-24 at this time? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing on Resolution 47-24. Madam Secretary, did we have any online testimony?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
I don't believe we have anyone signed up in advance. Is there anyone in the audience at this time who would like to speak on Resolution Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution 47-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 47-24.
Resolution Number 4724, Resolution Supporting the Anarundel County Board of Education's Fiscal Year 2026 Public School Construction Capital Improvement Program Request for Submission to the Interagency Commission on School Construction.
I don't see any lights of my colleagues, so I will once thank our representatives from the school system for being here, and our budget officer. I would, since you've come all this way, I do have one question. Would you all like to give the council an update on the next facilities strategic plan and where it is in the process?
Sure. We're currently working with our consultant reviewing Facility Condition Index scores for all of our schools right now. So they're going out to each one of the schools evaluating structural integrity, educational sufficiency. We plan on having those all assembled by the end of the calendar year and then reviewing those, and then after that, we'll put out a portal so that the public can comment and contribute to the planning.
So do you envision this time next year, the CIP having reflected some of that study? Is that sort of the timeframe we're looking at?
The plan is for the master plan to have input on the FY '27 CIP process.
Perfect. Fantastic. Thank you. Are there any questions? Last chance, folks, on 47-24. We do have an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One, this amendment replaces Exhibit A with Exhibit A1.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's exactly what it does, but just so the council understands what they're voting on, Exhibit A1 corrects a clerical error in the table that was in Exhibit A. It said, I believe, fiscal year '27, and it should say fiscal year '26. So that is the change in the table.
Motion to adopt Amendment Number One?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Feedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One has been adopted.
As a reminder, resolutions may be amended and voted on on the same night. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 47-24.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Feedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 4724 as amended has been adopted.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 73-24.
Bill Number 7324, An Ordnance Concerning Carrollton Manor Special Community Benefit District.
This is an administration bill, and just to remind everybody, we closed the public hearing on this at our last meeting. Mr. Hunt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. I have Chris Trumbauer, our Budget Director, and Greg Swain from the Office of Law here. This bill would allow, would change the purpose of Carrollton Manor and add to it to allow the Special Community Benefits District to acquire real property. Happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Feedler. Thank you, Madam Chair. If everyone remembers, my colleague supported a motion to hold this until this meeting because at the last weekday prior to our last meeting, I heard information and some concern that referenced two residential addresses, and when I looked them up, it appeared that they were one lot with one residential dwelling being in one community and the other being in a separate community, and I was trying to make heads or tails of how SCBD could be done in that scenario. I have to give Pam Groves in Office of Law a lot of credit. She dug through land records and recognized that our GIS mapping was not up to date, and they were actually two separate lots, which clarified all of my concern. Now, this bill does not address disagreements within the community and with neighboring community over land covenants, but I have reached out to the Office of Law who confirmed that those types of disputes would be handled between the two private community parties and are not up for this council to make a decision on. So with that, I am going to be supporting the legislation this evening and happy to answer any questions if there's any outstanding, but also want to thank Mr. Trumbauer for attending one of the Zoom meetings with one of the parties involved. Thank you.
Any further questions on Bill 73-24? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 73-24.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Feedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 7324 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 75-24.
Bill Number 7524, An Ordnance Concerning Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies, Subdivision and Development, Zoning, Development, Mixed Use Districts.
Mr. Hunt, this is an administration bill. When your team is assembled, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Janson Evelyn, our Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Land Use, Lynn Miller from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Greg Swain from the Office of Law. We've discussed this bill a couple times at prior council meetings and at a work session, so I'm not going to go through the entirety of telling the story of what is in this bill. But just as a recap, this bill updates and revises the zoning and development regulations as they relate to mixed-use districts to better align them with policies and recommendations in Plan 2040 and region plans, and to provide more flexibility for future development projects. And we want this to be a tool in the toolbox that can be used for the SACs and PAB for the remaining six region plans that we have coming in the next two years. I'll turn it over to Janson if he wants to add anything else. If not, we're happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions regarding Bill 75-24 at this time? We'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 75-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
We have no one signed up in advance. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on Bill Number 75-24? You may come forward at this time. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 75-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 75-24.
Bill Number 7524, An Ordnance Concerning Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies, Subdivision and Development, Zoning, Development, Mixed Use Districts.
Mr. Hunt, I believe there are two amendments to this bill.
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Five.
Amendment Number Five, this amendment provides that any use lawfully in existence in a mixed-use district prior to the effective date of this ordinance may continue under certain circumstances.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So basically, what this amendment says is that uses that are currently existing in mixed-use districts, once this bill passes, assuming it passes, if the regulations surrounding those districts change, we wanted to make sure that existing uses that wouldn't be allowed in the new districts don't suddenly become a nonconforming use, so this grandfatheres them in and allows them to continue.
Mr. Volkey.
I'm awake. I'm asking a question. So I guess explain to me the difference between this and a nonconforming use, because this feels a lot like a nonconforming use when I read it. You effectively say, as long as they continue to do what they're doing and don't cease the operation for 12 months, they're good. I guess they don't have to file the nonconforming use certificate? What's the difference between this and a nonconforming use? Because this feels like a distinction without a difference to me.
Greg Swain from the Office of Law. I think it is a little different because a nonconforming use is done by operation of law. When you change the law and it's an illegal use, this maintains the use as a legal use, not as an illegal use.
Legal as long as it continues in operation. It doesn't stop. Okay. And I guess the only question I would have with this and to use is the concern that I've gotten from a lot of landowners is that they can't get financing, right? If they're using a piece of property in a way that the code doesn't allow, if there's ever a lapse condition, then a lot of lenders are going to look at that and not be excited about lending money on that.
Well, correct, but I think the point there is if they're using the land in a way that the code doesn't allow, this does allow the use to continue. So it is a legal use. Nonconforming use is a use that was legal at one time and is no longer legal by operation of law.
Isn't that what this is?
Well, no, it's not, because this is expressly saying that it continues to be a permitted use with two conditions.
Unless you stop using it, in which case you couldn't come back and do it again, which is identical to a nonconforming use.
Similar to the way nonconforming is. Yes.
Okay. I hear what you're saying in terms of the difference, and I think there may be a very slight difference, but it feels very similar to me. So I guess the concern I would have is this may function better if we just say, whatever it is that you're doing, you can continue doing. I guess, does this continue for like a successor and interest? So like if I was running a business that was a permitted lawful use at the time that I opened it, and then this changes the zoning, and I sell that business to somebody else, does that continued lawful use persist?
It does.
Okay, all right. I guess that's better.
I don't have any, see any other questions. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Five.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Feedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Five has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Six.
Amendment Number Six, this amendment replaces the use chart for the mixed-use districts.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this does replace the use chart for the mixed-use districts. The council was also provided, just for comparison's sake, to make it a little easier, a redline copy so you can see what is different in the new chart that we are amending in.
I apologize. It seems like that that chart was not uploaded, so I am doing it right now. So give me one moment.
Is there a motion to adopt Amendment Number Six?
motion.
Is there a second? A second. Thank you. Are there any questions about Amendment Number Six? I see, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate the continued dialogue. This bill is certainly impacting District One in a, just making it public, I'm glad that we have this continued dialogue because in future, there's a potential future amendment that is going to come down here, maybe at the next meeting. But there are, of the 11 that exist now, about five, probably six are in District One, so it definitely impacts us in a way that is very large, and I'm grateful the administration is willing to work with me on some of those changes so that I can feel like the communities that are near or in these mixed-use districts are, have their voice heard. So I totally appreciate the continued dialogue. So that's all.
Ms. Feedler.
Never mind. Sorry, I found the red line.
Okay. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. So I am looking at the red line, and thank you for uploading that. Can somebody just walk through what the reason is that these were not in the original version and they've now been added? Or some of them subtracted? I mean, considering we're just getting the redline version now, like little context would be helpful.
Sure, happy to. Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning, apologies that you did not get the redline earlier. So what this is, if the council recalls, at the last hearing, you all passed an amendment to adopt some purpose statements for the five new mixed-use districts, and those were written after some additional feedback we had gotten after the bill had been prepared and introduced. So based on those purpose statements, we felt the need to reexamine the use chart to make sure that the five districts are in line with those new purpose statements. So one of the primary changes in this redline version is if you, let's see, so if you look at the five districts from left to right, mixed V to mixed U, and they sort of go up in intensity, so, and then if you look in that in conjunction with the purpose statements, I would say the first, third, and fifth one, so that's mixed V, N, and U, are described as being the districts that are maybe going to focus more on residential uses, but at three different sort of scales, so sort of village versus neighborhood versus urban. And the two other districts that are sort of in the middle, mixed G and mixed S, are described as being those that might have, that would still have a mix of uses, including residential, but that would be more focused on some of the, some more commercial, and particularly some of the more heavy and industrial, light industrial type uses that are maybe not quite as appropriate to be in a heavily residential area, and they also sort of range from a lower scale to a higher scale. So that's, that's, sorry, sort of a long answer to your question, but this chart is trying to match up better with those purpose statements. So you can see a lot of the light industrial and maybe what I would consider the heavier commercial uses that were initially allowed in mixed U have now been moved to mixed S, and in some cases, mixed G, and some other changes accordingly. That is the primary reason for the majority of changes that are in this. That's, that is the primary reason for the majority of changes that are in this, this redline version.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm just looking at the first page, I'm going to pick an example. I see right here, we're now adding as a permitted use, rooming houses in the two lowest-intensity mixed-use zones, the village and what I believe is the general zone. So again, consistent with what you just said about how we're sort of moving up in intensity, do we view rooming houses, which have historically not been something that we put in low-intensity residential areas, as something that is a low-intensity residential use that's compatible with those districts?
Yeah, I think that that one is, that change is less related specifically to one of the purpose statements. It's a use that staff felt was appropriate in any mixed-use district.
Along with nursing homes.
Correct.
In any mixed-use district. Okay.
We have any other questions about Amendment Number Six? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Six.
Ms. Ledbetter. Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment Number Six has been adopted.
Bill Number 75-24, as amended, will come back at our next meeting on November 18th, thank you, 2024. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 76-24.
Bill Number 76-24, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Maritime Districts Neighborhood Marina Zoning District.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your bill, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This bill, we've discussed at the previous work session, as well as our last council meeting, where we passed an amendment to reduce the size of a marina caretaker's unit to reflect what we allow in an ADU scenario on a residential dwelling, or residential lot. And appreciate your support, and I ask for my colleagues' support this evening.
Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Ethan Hunt for the administration. I have Lynn Miller from Planning and Zoning, and Greg Swain from the Office of Law, and we're comfortable with this bill. Happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions about Bill 76-24? We'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 76-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Well, we have no one signed up in advance. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on Bill 76-24? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 76-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 76-24.
Bill Number 76-24, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Maritime Districts Neighborhood Marina Zoning District.
Seeing no lights, no comments from my colleagues, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 76-24.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 76-24 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 77-24.
Bill Number 77-24, An Ordinance Concerning Licenses and Registrations, Towing Companies.
Mr. Volkey, this is your bill, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've discussed this previously, so I won't rehash all the details about the bill there. Two amendments coming at the appropriate time, I'll ask for your support, and I'll explain them then.
Mr. Hunt, would the administration like to weigh in at this time on Bill 77-24?
No, Madam Chair, just happy to answer any questions.
Seeing no questions of my colleagues, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 77-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
I don't have anyone signed up in advance. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on Bill Number 77-24? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 77-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 77-24.
Bill Number 77-24, An Ordinance Concerning Licenses and Registrations, Towing Companies.
I believe there are two amendments.
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two.
Amendment Number Two, this amendment removes the requirement for a towing company with a license to conduct light-duty police-initiated towing to have a record with a boom.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to appreciate Councilwoman Fiedler, who put her name on this amendment in light of my travel earlier today, I wasn't sure if I'd make it here, so she agreed to put up these amendments if I wasn't here, but I am. So with that, these two amendments, I'll speak to both of them just briefly, they were recommended by the Police Department upon their most recent review of the bill after it was introduced. So this first one, the Police Department felt that this would be a little bit less onerous to some of the tow companies if we removed this restriction or requirement, if you will, and that it would allow more tow companies to operate in this heavy-duty tow rotation. So with that, I would ask for my colleagues' support and move the amendment.
Ledbetter, second.
Mr. Hunt?
We're comfortable with this amendment.
Any questions? Seeing no questions, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Two has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Three.
Amendment Number Three, this technical amendment corrects the general reference in the purpose paragraph and corrects a reference to the director.
Mr. Volkey.
It's what it does, move the amendment.
Is there a second?
Ledbetter, second.
We support this amendment as well, thank you.
Okay, great. Are there any questions? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Three.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Three to Bill 77-24 has been adopted.
Thank you. Bill Number 77-24, as amended, will come back at the November 18th council meeting. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 78-24.
Bill Number 78-24, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Road Design.
Mr. Hunt, this is your, the administration's bill. When your team is assembled, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Janson Evil and our Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Land Use, Raghu Bhakdami from Inspections and Permits, David Braun from the Department of Public Works, Sarah Fowler from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Kristi Nederer from the Office of Law. So currently, Anne Arundel County is the only large county in the state of Maryland that does not require properties that are being developed to make frontage improvements to the road that are in front of the property, to bring them up to design manual standards as a general condition of development. Other counties in Maryland that currently do this are Prince George's, Montgomery, Howard, Baltimore, and Queen Anne's Counties. This bill proposes to update the road design requirements to clarify when road frontage and right-of-way dedication and improvements are required for new developments. So an example of some of those improvements may include curb and gutter improvements, sidewalks, lighting, and other frontage improvements, such as construction of the road to the full design manual standards. This bill also clarifies the declaration requirements for private roads. So basically, when a developer includes new private roads within the confines of a development, this bill would require that they record in the county land records that the cost and maintenance for the private road shall be either on the community association or homeowners' association, the council of unit owners for a condo regime, or if you don't have an HOA, a condo association, or a community association, the homeowners of the units that abut that private road would be responsible for the cost of maintenance. So this aligns our legislation with best, industry best practice, other major jurisdictions that already have this requirement in place. If this legislation passes, it takes that burden of making those improvements off county taxpayers and requiring the county to come behind to bring the roads at front development up to those standards. There are three amendments that we can discuss at the appropriate time, but for now, turn it over to my team at the table if they wanted to add any additional information. If not, we're happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Radvian.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was before.
Okay. We don't appear to have any questions at this time. We'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 70, what are we on? 78, I crossed it out. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, we received two pieces, which have been shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
I don't have anyone signed up in advance. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak at this time on Bill 78-24? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill 78-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 78-24.
Bill Number 78-24, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Road Design.
And if there are no further questions or comments, we can, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One, this amendment eliminates the requirement that a development pass the test for adequate public road facilities before being eligible for grandfathering.
Mr. Hunt, this is your amendment, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the bill as introduced says that a development application that's in process right now, or is in process at the time this bill takes effect, is grandfathered in, and the law, as it applies prior to the effectiveness of this bill, would apply to that application as long as they meet adequate public facilities. When it comes to transportation, that requirement in further discussion doesn't seem to be particularly pertinent or necessary to the bill, so we're removing it. And keeping in mind, we do have a adequate public facilities ordinance revision to the transportation APFO that will be coming in either later this month, well, next month at the earliest, but in the very near future.
Is there a motion to adopt Amendment Number One?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this, this just removes it from the grandfathering provision, it doesn't, it doesn't remove the requirement to fulfill adequate public facilities.
Correct.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on Amendment Number One?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm sorry, yeah. Explain it one more time.
So, if, if a development project, if the application is in process currently, right, they would be governed by the road frontage design requirements as they currently exist, which is to say they, there aren't any, right, in the county code. And so, the bill as introduced says that if they, you know, if that application is in process, they are grandfathered in and don't have to meet these, the road frontage requirement, provided that they meet adequate public facilities. But they have to meet adequate public facilities anyway. So it's, it's redundant, that's the word I was looking for.
Well, it's not-
But there are none, it's not redundant.
It's not redundant.
No.
It's, it would limit-
Right.
It would limit who could be grandfathered.
Correct.
A progress, a project would have to be all further along in their process to have already done the work to meet adequate public facilities. So it would make them, if they hadn't gotten that far, far along in their development process, they'd have to go back, they wouldn't be grandfathered.
Right.
They wouldn't be grandfathered. So it's, it's, this, the way it's drafted is, we've, we've never really done a grandfathering clause that included an APFO before being able to be grandfathered, do you know what I mean?
Uh huh, uh huh. It seems like it's a nuanced grandfathering clause.
Well, it's a, it would, if this amendment passes, we'll have a regular grandfathering clause, the more common grandfathering clause than we've had.
Okay.
Do we have any questions, further questions on Amendment Number One? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Mr. Smith is absent. Ms. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
We have three in the affirmative, one absent, and three in the negative, which makes this vote fail.
It sure does. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two.
Amendment Number Two, this amendment clarifies that public roads abutting a proposed development that provide vehicular access to the development must be improved in accordance with the DPW Design Manual.
Mr. Hunt, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So that, exactly what this does, it just clarifies that it's the roads where traffic is entering a development or exiting a development that must be improved, not any road that touches any portion of a property line with a development. And this is pretty common, this is what other counties do.
Is there a motion to adopt Amendment Number Two?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any question or comments about Amendment Number Two? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Two to Bill 78-24 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Three.
Amendment Number Three, this amendment clarifies that a developer is responsible for complying with the DPW Design Manual and fee simple deed for a county road only if it abuts the proposed development, and a developer is responsible for complying with relevant state design guidelines and requirements if a proposed development abuts a state road.
Mr. Hunt, this is your amendment, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The bill as drafted used the term adjacent, and we felt that this was a more accurate description, so.
Is there a motion to adopt Amendment Number Three?
motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions regarding Amendment Number Three? Ms. Radvian.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Smith. No, okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Three.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Three has been adopted.
Mr. Smith.
In fact, Madam Chair, if you can record me as a aye vote on Amendment Number One, I'll have to rush out of here and came right back, and I didn't realize it was going to go that fast. Thank you.
You're welcome. That makes the vote for Amendment Number One, four in the affirmative, three in the negative, so Amendment Number One has gone from failed to passed, adopted.
Bill Number 78-24 will come, as amended, will come back on November 18th, I'm sorry.
Point of order, I don't think you can do that. I think you'd have to call for a motion to reconsider on that vote.
I believe, Mr. Volkey, you've walked out of the room and come back and just-
I agree, and come back in on the winning side, no problem, but to change the outcome of a vote, that's, it's a parliamentarian question, that's all. I would just appeal to the parliamentarian to advise.
I don't know that-
I guess the question is, is it necessary? Or can you just come in and say, I'm going to be at this vote?
I do not believe it's necessary.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 79-24.
Bill Number 79-24, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel Modification of Classification Plan Positions in the Classified Service, Police Department.
This is an administration bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. Sorry, let me, let me pull up my list here. With me at the table, I have Ann Bedewski, Jackie Atkinson, and Sarah Heffernan from[1789.26] the Office of Personnel, and Chief Amalawad from our police department, as well as Greg Swain from the Office of Law. So, under the county code, Section 61201(c)(2), County Council shall approve pay grade changes in the classification plan that are ten percent or greater. Bill seventy-nine twenty-four does two classification plan changes within the police department. The first is a grade reallocation of the Evidence Coordinator Leader class from an NR-16 to an NR-18, which impacts one filled position. The second thing the bill does is a vacant position reclass. It changes an Admin Assistant Two, which is grade OS4, to a Management Aid, which is grade NR-12. This does not increase the position count. It exchanges one classification for another. There's also one amendment. We'll discuss it at the appropriate time, but we're happy to answer any questions.
Is there any discussion regarding Bill seventy-nine dash twenty-four? Madam Secretary, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill number seventy-nine dash twenty-four. Did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
I don't have anyone signed up in advance at this time. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward to speak on Bill seventy-nine dash twenty-four? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill number seventy-nine dash twenty-four is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number seventy-nine dash twenty-four.
Bill number seventy-nine twenty-four, In Ordnance Concerning Personnel Modification of Classification Plan, Positions in the Classified Service, Police Department.
We have an amendment on this bill, Mr. Hunt?
Yes, Madam Chair, that is correct.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment number one.
Amendment number one. This amendment approves the change of the pay grade for the job classification and the exempt service of Assistant Chief of Police from E7 to E8.
Thank you. So, that is exactly what that does, but we're happy to answer any questions. The council allows them.
Is there a motion to adopt Amendment number one?
Sound moved. Second.
Any questions about Amendment number one? Mr. Volkey.
What's the fiscal note?
On the amendment?
Uh huh. Because I saw the fiscal note and the rest of it, but this isn't in the fiscal note.
Ann Bedewski, Personnel Officer. I don't have an exact figure for you, but I would say about $20,000 or less.
For one person?
Yes. I think it's closer to fourteen.
It's fourteen or twenty?
It's less than twenty. I do not have the exact number. I can get it for you.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Was this the typo on the original? Obviously, it's a big difference, but I'm just wondering how this was not flagged originally in the original bill.
Oh, I'm sorry. The classification review was not complete, but it was done by the... From the time the bill was introduced to now, so we took an opportunity, because it is greater than ten percent, to bring it before you for approval.
Okay.
It is a separate cop... It's a third reclassification that it requires council review.
Oh, so this position altogether isn't in the original bill, is what you're saying?
That is correct.
I see. I see. Okay. I don't seem to have any other questions with my colleagues. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment number one.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number one to Bill seventy-nine twenty-four has been adopted.
Bill seventy-nine twenty-four, as amended, will come back before this council on November Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number eighty dash twenty-four.
Eighty... Excuse me. Bill number eighty twenty-four, In Ordnance Concerning Public Works Utilities Charges and Assessments for Water and Wastewater Affordable Dwelling Units.
This is my bill. So, I want to thank Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Hummer for joining on as co-sponsors of Bill eighty dash twenty-four. This bill is a direct result of some state legislation, and this is truing up our county code to comply and bring affordable housing provided by nonprofits, giving them the same incentive and benefit as our workforce housing to... For those units within a nonprofit's project that are serving residents, sixty percent of area median income are below, the capital connection charge fifty percent reduction. Urge support of my colleagues. And, Mr. Hunt, did you have any comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Karen Henry, our Director of Public Works, and Greg Swain from the Office of Law. I don't really have any comments, just to say that we support the bill. I will note, I have a note scratched here on my chicken scratch handwriting. I believe a question came up at the work session about any changes that might be needed to the code in this area as a result of changes to COMAR coming out of the governor's legislation, and I believe those regulations are still in the process of being developed.
Ms. Radvian.
I would also like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Thank you.
Noted. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill eighty dash twenty-four. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received one piece which has been shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
Thank you. I have one individual signed up in advance, Riley Shubridge. If there's anyone else here, you may come forward at this time. Thank you. You can state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Great. Good evening, Council President Pickard and members of the county council. For the record, my name is Riley Shubridge, and I'm the Director of Government Relations for the Ark Central Chesapeake Region, here in support of Bill number eighty twenty-four on behalf of the Ark and Chesapeake Neighbors. For the record as well, our address is 999 Corporate Boulevard in Lythicum, Maryland. Council President Pickard, thank you again for introducing this important legislation. The Ark Central Chesapeake Region empowers people with disabilities to live the lives they choose and create inclusive communities where everyone is welcome and has access to the resources they need. One way we foster inclusive communities is through our subsidiary Chesapeake Neighbors. Chesapeake Neighbors provides safe and accessible, affordable rental housing for tenants ranging from low-income to market-rate renters. As you all know, during the 2024 legislative session, the state passed the Housing Expansion and Affordability Act of 2024 to reduce barriers to affordable and attainable housing development. The enactment of the state law is a major step in ensuring these goals are achievable. Bill number eighty twenty-four would further the state's mission by allowing affordable housing units controlled by a nonprofit organization be exempt from fifty percent of the capital facility connection charges. The passage of this legislation would align Anarundale County Code with the state's commitment to removing barriers and promoting affordable housing development, further enabling nonprofits to create the homes our communities need. For these reasons, we urge the council to give a favorable report on Bill number eighty twenty-four.
Thank you. Seeing no further movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill eighty dash twenty-four is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number eighty dash twenty-four.
Bill number eighty twenty-four, In Ordnance Concerning Public Works Utilities Charges and Assessments for Water and Wastewater Affordable Dwelling Units.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Does the state law, the Housing Expansion and Affordability Act of 2024, which was HB 538, does that require that we do this? Or... Because when you say this aligns us with state law, I just... I'm looking at the auditor's summary, and I don't see that it says this is a requirement of state law, but I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
No, it's not a requirement of state law. I should have said it aligns our...
Vision.
Our other policies, like workforce housing. It aligns the... So, the workforce housing is more expansive. The nonprofit developers have different mandates within that state law, so we're just making sure that their affordable units also receive a benefit that we provide, affordable units under our workforce housing policy.
Understood. Thank you.
Are there any further questions? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill eighty dash twenty-four.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill number eighty twenty-four has passed.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number eighty-one dash twenty-four.
Bill number eighty-one twenty-four, In Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Industrial Districts, Electric Vehicle Repair, Electric Vehicle Towing and Storage.
Okay. This is also my bill. It's never easy to be chair and have bills. So, Bill eighty-one dash twenty-four adds a new use to our use chart and allows for electric vehicle repair facilities that only service electric vehicles to be permitted in our W1, W2, W3 zones, and I have an amendment to further enhance that. Currently, there isn't a distinction between electronic... Electric vehicles and gas-powered vehicles. Electric vehicle repair is going to not be as noisy or smelly, so we feel for when our electric vehicle begin to roll off of... What am I thinking? Lord. Warranty, thank you, from dealers, that this will be a new category of repair services, and therefore, we want to make sure that they can appropriately locate in our zoning code. Mr. Hunt, would the administration like to weigh in on Bill eighty-one dash twenty-four?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. I have Lynn Miller from Planning and Zoning, and Greg Swain from the Office of Law. We support this bill, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions at this time? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill eighty-one dash twenty-four. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Well, now, I don't have anyone signed up in advance. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Thank you very much for this opportunity to provide testimony in this matter. Madam Chair, thank you for introducing this legislation. The debate still rages. Are electric cars here to stay? Will they replace the internal combustion engine? Are petroleum-powered cars soon to be obsolete? This legislation seeks to answer none of those questions. This bill simply acknowledges that a great many electric-powered vehicles have been built and sold, especially over the past five years. For the most part, service and maintenance of this has occurred at the dealership where the vehicle was sold. Mostly, this is a function of the fact that the cars are still under warranty. Many of the cars that were manufactured more than five years ago, however, are no longer under warranty, and repairs are becoming quite expensive. Vehicle owners are seeking other options. The zoning code makes no real mention regarding EV-powered vehicles. Automobile and truck repair facilities are permitted use in the C4, W2, and W3 districts. Now, the code does not differentiate between or among power sources, so presumably, EV repairs are permitted wherever other vehicle repairs are allowed. However, it's not entirely clear, and when new people are going to be coming and investing substantial dollars and substantial property investments in this new use, they need certainty. Passage of this bill establishes parity with regards to auto repair and maintenance facilities regardless of their power source. The bill seeks to accomplish one other thing. It makes EV repair service a permitted use in the W1 industrial zone. One of the objections to auto repairs is the noise and the smell, as was intimated earlier. Also, the sometimes loud revving of internal combustion engines while they're being tuned is not something that makes them popular with neighbors. This, of course, is not the case with electric-powered vehicles, and it is appropriate that we allow this use to be expanded into the W1 industrial district to make it a feasible enterprise for small startup operations that we're likely to see coming about in the coming future. So, some people would think that this is a bill that supports the environment, and it does.
Mr. Baker.
And...
Your buzzer went off.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have to be fair and consistent, or at least try to be. Seeing... Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on Bill seventy... Eighty-one dash twenty-four? Seeing none, the public hearing on Bill eighty-one dash twenty-four is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number eighty-one dash twenty-four.
Bill number eighty-one twenty-four, In Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Industrial Districts, Electric Vehicle Repair, Electric Vehicle Towing and Storage.
Thank you. There is... There are two amendments that we discovered during the work session. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment number one.
Amendment number one. This amendment makes a technical correction in the function paragraph and adds electric vehicle towing and storage facilities temporary storage not to exceed ninety days as permitted use in C4 districts.
Thank you. This is my amendment. Since we are adding electric vehicle towing and storage to the code, we wanted to make sure that we also made sure it was permitted in C4, not just the W zones like... So, that's what this bill does. Does the administration... Motion to adopt? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We support this amendment.
Are there any questions regarding Amendment number one? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment number one.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number one has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment number two.
Amendment number two. This amendment clarifies that electric vehicle storage is temporary for no more than ninety days.
That's exactly what this amendment does. Is there a motion to adopt Amendment number two? Oh, I guess I should have made my own motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We support this as well.
Thank you. I want to thank Ms. Lynn Miller for helping bring some clarity to the originally drafted bill, so thank you. Is there any questions about this amendment? Ms. Radvian.
I'm sorry.
You're fine.
I'm certainly not going to turn on my light tonight.
That's okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment number two.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number two to Bill eighty-one twenty-four has been adopted.
Thank you. Bill number eighty-one dash twenty-four, as amended, will come back before this council on November eighteenth, 2024. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number eighty-two dash twenty-four.
Bill number eighty-two twenty-four, In Ordnance Concerning Real Property Taxes Tax Credits Retired Veterans.
Mr. Smith, this is your bill. You have the floor.
Thank you.
As mentioned previously, this is just an attempt to bring some parity to how this bill is utilized. When we passed this, probably twenties, sometime ago, seven-plus years ago, we did have a cap on the value of the house, and that has come into play and impacted certain citizens in Anarona County. So, this, the intent behind this bill is to add some relief to those veterans who have, who used to qualify for this bill, but because the housing market has been as ups and downs as it has been, played out, this is an effort to sort of bring some parity to that at the appropriate time. There will be an amendment that seeks to cap this at some point, but other than that, just trying to help fellow veterans who serve this country, and we want to be able to protect them and their interest in our county, so, that's it.
Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Brian Shank from the Office of Finance, Greg Swain from the County Office of Law. We're comfortable with this bill. I just remind the council, as you know, when you grant a credit to some property owners, that burden is picked up by other property owners. However, in this current fiscal year, the total amount of money that went to the retired veterans' tax credit was a little over sixty-six thousand dollars.
I think it's in the ballpark of about a hundred and fifty people that even qualify this year, somewhere in that ballpark, which is not a significant amount of people, considering we have sixty thousand sort of veterans here in the county. And so, the goal is to, one, get the word out, but, but two, hopefully, be able to expand it so that they can benefit from it, and this is the way to do that. Housing in Anarona County is not cheap, and so, the average house has certainly increased over the years, and so, this is to make sure that we don't inadvertently impact those folks in a negative way, especially the ones that were already qualifying for this. And it's, the irony is, if you look at the previous years, you'll see the number goes down, because as the house, housing value has gone up, those people no longer qualify for the program, and so, interesting fact in that, that aspect. But, that's all.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to state for the record that my, I have two members of my immediate family with my father and my husband, who are veterans and have principal residence in Anarona County. I submitted the proper documentation to the Ethics Commission and asked for an opinion. They did give me the opinion that I was able to participate in this discussion, and, but I just wanted to put that all out there for the record publicly.
Thank you.
And I will also publicly, I do not qualify for this bill. I am not a retired veteran, receiving a pension, so I would not qualify for this, just to clarify.
Madam Secretary, can I be added as a co-sponsor, please?
Yes, Madam Chair.
At this time, we'll now open the public hearing on bill number eighty-two dash twenty-four. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
We have no one signed up in advance. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on bill eighty-two dash twenty-four at this time? Please come forward. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on bill eighty-two dash twenty-four is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number eighty-two dash twenty-four.
Bill number eighty-two twenty-four, an ordinance concerning real property taxes tax credits retired veterans.
I believe there's an amendment for this bill. Mr. Smith.
Madam Chair. Oh.
Sorry, I was trying to catch you before we went to the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I just wanted to clarify, because it's probably somewhere in the public that my husband's a veteran, but he is a veteran that would not qualify for this bill.
Oh, okay.
So, I wanted to make that public as well.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number one.
Amendment number one, this amendment requires the principal residence's assessed value to be eight hundred thousand dollars or less, and clarifies that the tax credit applies to an assessed value of up to five hundred thousand dollars.
Mr. Smith, this is your amendment.
So, previously, as it's being executed, right now, the home value for a reserve, for a reservist, for a military member who is retired to benefit from this, this program, the house value has to be five hundred or less, and then, there's, there's an income requirement as well that's, that's levied on it. This piece is only affixing it to the, the house value. We've had, you know, I did some research on houses here in Anarona County, and you could, you got townhomes, you know, regular normal houses that are literally over five hundred thousand dollars that retired veterans live in, whose income has not necessarily changed, but the value of the house, in the appraised value, has, has gone up as well. And so, this is to ensure, and, and the number of the eight hundred, where that comes from, essentially is saying, if your house is, is valued at eight hundred thousand or less, you will be able to qualify, but you only receive a benefit up to the first five hundred thousand, keeping in line with the previous implementation of it. Right now, it's five hundred thousand, but this just changes, changes the value of the house to, so if your house happens to be eight hundred thousand, you're still only going to get the benefit of the first five hundred thousand of that eight hundred thousand house. The reason that eight hundred thousand was a key number, because if you go and get a VA loan right now in Anarona County, it's right under eight hundred thousand dollars, it's like seven eighty or something like that. So, if you're a veteran and you go and get a VA loan on a house, it literally aligns it with the VA cap for this region, so that's why that number was selected, so that those people who are receiving this benefit can continue, who've now, were in a house that was four ninety at one point, now it's five ten, they can still receive that benefit up to when that house gets to a value of about eight hundred thousand. But hopefully, that's decades from now and not, not, you know, weeks or months, depending on the housing market. So, yes, I will take that as a sign, but that's the intent, or the most, or the, the impact of this amendment. Motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hunt, any comments from the administration?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're comfortable with this amendment.
Any discussion of my colleagues? Ms. Radbien.
This is semi-related to this. What was the, what was the, the limit before your bill?
Five hundred thousand.
Oh.
So, yeah, it was five hundred thousand was the, when we passed that before, when I was on the council, there were comments and concerns about a retired veteran who did receive a pension, did receive this benefit, and if they happened to have, you know, high income, or maybe they were a millionaire. So, we, we didn't want to capture million-dollar homes in this procedure, and so, at the time, we just capped it at the, the value of the house being five hundred thousand. So, this amendment now says the value of the house to qualify can't be more than eight hundred thousand.
I think I'm asking a different question, before this, not before this amendment, because that's what's in your bill, right?
You're losing me. What happened? You said the...
The bill, the bill caps...
The bill, oh, the bill, the, the bill that I just, this bill specifically, didn't have the, the amendment of the eight hundred thousand. It just said the first five hundred thousand of assessed value. So, you can have a two-million-dollar home owned by a veteran who is receiving a pension, and they would technically qualify for this benefit. So, I was trying to exclude those outrageous sort of significantly high homes, because more than likely, if you live in a two, three-million-dollar home, you're not going to need this benefit. But someone who lives in a, you know, in, you know, in excess of five hundred thousand, whether that's five fifty or six hundred, those are modest homes. Those are not like crazy sort of mansions that veterans are, who are retired, are living in. And so, this was to, to lift that cap a little, to make sure those, those homes are not pushed out of this because of the market volatility that we live in.
So, and before your bill, the cap was five hundred?
Five hundred, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And it's still five hundred.
Right.
But the home value can now be up to eight hundred instead of five hundred.
Mr. Volkey.
Mr. Smith, at the risk of, of being offensive, and I don't mean...
No, 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 no.
But, why is it that if somebody's house is worth eight hundred and one thousand, or worth seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, but they're both veterans, and they both put their life on the line for this country, that one is allowed to have this benefit and the other isn't? The number just, to me, seems like, I get that you're trying to not allow this benefit to go too far and wide, but I also look at it, and I say, every single one of the people who qualifies gave up an awful lot to get to this point. So, that's where I look at it, and I actually like the way you did it with the fifteen percent up to the first five hundred thousand, because that seems reasonable. That seems across the board, treating all veterans the same. This seems like you're, again, sort of creating these two classes, and I don't know that I can necessarily agree with the idea that just because your house is worth eight hundred and one thousand...
Right.
You're better situated than the person at seven ninety-nine.
Well, the good thing is, you're totally not offending me. It's a very...
I don't mean to.
No, 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 you're not. But if you go get a VA loan, veterans have limits on loans, VA loans, that they can obtain, and whether or not the, the Veterans Administration will support those loans. And so, this is, just as the federal government put caps on the, the amount of loans that they will safely stand behind, this is, this is no different than that. And so, unfortunately, there is a, a line in the sand that even the federal government sort of draws, and this aligns that number with that line in the sand that they have. That was the only reason.
Totally get that.
Yeah.
But if a veteran were to say, I don't want to get the VA loan, or maybe they've already tied up their VA funding on another property or something, they could always get a private loan. This, so in that instance, then, those, those limits, while I see you're trying to get some rational basis for the number, and I respect that...
Yeah.
I don't know that that's going to be every single situation for every single veteran. There could be plenty of veterans who have a private loan that say that's what they want to get, so. That, that's my struggle with it, is that I really like the way your bill is written originally, and I really don't like this amendment, and that's the reason I don't like it, is because that number, somebody's at seven ninety-nine and at eight oh one, I don't see those people as different financial positions, they're pretty close, but one's going to get a fifteen percent cut on the first five hundred, and the other's going to be completely excluded.
Till later, sir.
Okay.
Ms. Radbien.
Thank you. And either way, there's still an income limit.
Requirement. There's still an income requirement, yes.
Okay.
What, what is the income requirement?
I'm going to try back up. Brian Shank, Tax Department, Anarona County Office of Finance. This program does not have an income requirement. That would be the Disabled Veterans Program has the income requirement. This one does not. I would draw that comment, yeah. That is the, mixed up my two VA benefits. I'm glad you clarified that, because for some reason, over the last couple of weeks, I've been sticking my head in this, this, these two requirements, and was fixated on the housing issue from the veteran that reached out to me. But, yeah, I guess that is not the case.
Any further questions about amendment number one?
I think that's even more important now, that since there isn't an income requirement on this one, that there is some reasonable limitation on, you know, where the line is. But I thought aligning it to the VA's housing sort of cap was, was probably the right number to be at, right in that ballpark. That's the only reason that question came out. There were some folks who was concerned about it being a five-million-dollar home, and they getting a tax benefit on, because they were a veteran, and I don't see those people necessarily needing the, the benefit, and I'm a veteran, and, but I totally respect and understand where you're standing. Mr. Volkey.
Ms. Feidler.
Absent this amendment, does the bill still limit the tax credit applying to only a value, assessed value up to five hundred thousand?
Correct.
I think maybe, Ms. Radbien, that was the line of questioning, that regardless of the cap, the eight hundred, that the assessed value is still applied to up to five hundred thousand.
Correct.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Did you want to say something? You're the sponsor.
No, I think she, she clarified it.
Okay. The, the only thing I was going to say is, again, back to that sort of original law process, every one of these people who is eligible for this is a veteran. They all did serve. They all are receiving a pension. The federal government doesn't look at those folks and say, well, you're doing quite well in life. You've gotten a defense job in the private sector. We, we're not going to give you that pension. They earned that pension. This is a benefit that we, as a county, are offering to these people because they serve, because they are veterans. And so, I think the idea of saying, you're sort of disqualified because maybe your house is worth eight hundred and one thousand, opposed to seven ninety-nine, again, I just don't see them, both financially and from an income standpoint, I'm not sure that they're in different places. Even if somebody's house is worth a million dollars, right? Okay, so maybe they bought in a good area, maybe they put some money in, they got some sweat equity, now it's up, but they're being penalized for that, even though they're, they could be, I have people in my district who are in houses they've owned for a long, long time that are worth good money, that don't have a lot of income stream. There could be people who are in lower-value houses that have a better income stream. So, I just think it's a little bit apples and oranges, and to me, I'm looking at it going, if we're going to do it for one, let's just do it for all, because they've all done the same thing, and they've all served our country to be able to get there, so let's just give it to all of them. That's what I think.
No.
So, that's where I'm at on the amendment.
The, the good thing, you know, here's the irony, is, is we passed this bill before with, with some limitations, and seven years later, or whatever the time is, we're back sort of reevaluating to test whether or not it's been effective. If for some reason, the eight hundred is, is, and we have owners who are certainly in houses greater than that, start reaching out to all of their council members and saying, hey, we, we are impacted by this, I mean, it's not like we can't revisit this in the future. I'm, I'm, I was just trying to put a placeholder to say, to capture the, because I know for a fact, five hundred thousand dollars in Anarona County does not necessarily get you a McMansion. And so, you know, where is that McM, where does that number start for, for those larger houses? It, it varies, depending on where you're at. This just tries to identify some target that is reasonable, and I, like I said, I talked to some veterans earlier today, who, who were going to come out to the next meeting, because I told them I wanted, they wanted to amend it, and most of them, if not all of them, were comfortable with where the VA rating number was. That's the only reason I picked that number, because they were, they were comfortable with it.
Can I have one more thing?
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, if you think about it, you said there's a hundred and fifty people in the county who are even going to qualify. Fifteen percent on five hundred is the same whether the house is worth five hundred, eight hundred, a million.
Sure.
Because that number's the same. I'd rather not put a cap on it. I'd rather come back in the future and say, okay, five hundred isn't enough, now we need to take that up, because housing prices have gone up, so let's increase who's eligible, you know, or let's increase the amount of the credit, or something like that, at the bottom, moving that up. That's just, that would be my preferred way of doing it. So, I just want you to know where I'm at on the amendment.
No, 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 I appreciate that. I, um, look, I didn't, I didn't work any council members. I, I was just trying to do the, what I thought was in the best interest of these folks, this group that had reached out, so I don't know how the bill is going to go today, to be honest with you. So, I also don't know if, if the administration, I knew they were at least somewhat potentially comfortable on the, this, this eight hundred number, from what I had heard, and so, is... I, I still, I think the eight hundred is probably reasonable, and if we need to revisit it, we can always revisit.
Ms. Radbien.
I was curious if you had, or if Madam Auditor had looked at the fiscal impact of the bill with this amendment versus the fiscal impact, the original fiscal, fiscal impact that we had, or that we were provided? Because presumably, a lot more houses would qualify, like a lot more veterans would qualify, because...
Yeah, I don't know if she was able to get a assessment in, because this, this amendment came out today.
Oh.
But I think the total amount that we expended before was like, what was the total amount? I know that was in the...
Sixty-six thousand.
Sixty-six thousand. So, presumably, I don't see this being, tomorrow's going to be eight million dollars' worth of a tax, but I just don't see that happening. You may go up to a hundred thousand, that's expended, potentially, with, with the eight hundred value being there, which is still not a lot in my mind for a benefit that, for, for this population.
Yeah, I would, I, I think the hit to the county is, is nominal.
Right.
Similar to the bill we just passed for three, for affordable housing, reduction of connection, capital facility connections charges. This is a fascinating conversation, but I guess it just depends on where people stand on this amendment. Are we ready to take a vote on amendment number one? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Feidler.
Aye.
Ms. Radbien.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment number one to bill eighty-two twenty-four has been adopted. Bill number eighty-two dash twenty-four will, as amended, will come back on November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution thirty-nine dash twenty-four.
Resolution number thirty-nine twenty-four, resolution approving Anarona County's twenty-twenty-four financial assurance plan for compliance with the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Phase One Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Permit.
Mr. Hunt, this is an administration resolution. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Eric Michelson and Mike Rubiak from the Department of Public Works, and Greg Swain from the Office of Law. Resolution 3924 approves the county's 2024 Financial Assurance Plan. This is a requirement of state law that we submit a financial assurance plan to ensure that we can meet the obligations imposed on us under our MS4 permits, permit, which is the municipal separate stormwater and sewage discharge permit.
Municipal separate storm sewer system permit.
Okay. It's been a while since I've had to say that. I used to know it off the top of my head. But that's, that's the federal permit that regulates the discharge of treated water from the county water system. And I'll turn it over to Eric to talk a little more in detail about it.
Eric Michelson, Deputy Director, Anarundale County, Department of Public Works. Again, so as Ethan had said, this is our every-two-year report to MDE, demonstrating that we've got the fiscal sufficiency to achieve the permit. As you'll see in the executive summary, we do in fact meet that goal, thanks to the support of the administration and the council in terms of our budgetary supports. We've made good progress towards our current permit, and we're looking forward to locking in attainment for, towards our next permit during this cycle. We're actually ahead of schedule. So looking forward to submitting this with our annual report in December and letting MDE know that the county is on the right track. Also, I'd like to thank the Auditor's Office. They offered some very helpful feedback in their review of the comments.
Well, that's nice. Are there any questions about resolution number 39-24? I guess no one wants to try to say all those big words. We'll now open the public hearing on resolution number 39-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
We have no one signed up in advance. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on resolution 39-24 at this time? Seeing absolute stillness in the audience, the public hearing on resolution number 39-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution number 39-24.
Resolution number 3924, resolution approving Anarundale County's 2024 Financial Assurance Plan for Compliance with the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Phase One Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Permit.
Any further discussion? Thank you for the hard work that you do in your shop. Madam Secretary, please read the title, please call the roll on resolution 39-24.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution number 3924 has been adopted.
Okay. So I want to make sure I do this right. We're going to have a joint, we're going to vote to have a joint public hearing on the next round of, she's got to read them all in, right? May I have a motion to hold a joint public hearing for resolutions numbers 41-24, 42-24, 43-24, 44-24, 45-24, and 46-24?
Ledbetter's still moved.
Sir, second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to hold a joint public hearing for resolutions 41-24 through 46-24.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to hold a joint public hearing for resolution numbers 41, 24 through 46, 24 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of resolutions numbers 41-24, 42-24, 43-24, 44-24, 45-24, and 46-24.
Resolution number 4124, resolution approving the application of Stephen Maurice Parks Jr. to sell agricultural land preservation easement to the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation on 94.84 acres in Lothian, Maryland. Resolution number 4224, resolution approving the application of Land Preserve LLC to sell agricultural land preservation easement to the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation on 84.55 acres in Edgewater, Maryland. Resolution number 4324, resolution approving the application of Gary L. Jackson and Julie G. Jackson to sell agricultural land preservation easement to the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation on 59.91 acres in Lothian, Maryland. Resolution number 4424, resolution approving the application of Virginia R. Garrettson, Dean C. Garrettson, and Dean C. Garrettson Jr. to sell agricultural land preservation easement to the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation on 48.79 acres in Lothian, Maryland. Resolution number 54, excuse me, resolution number 4524, resolution approving the application of Alan P. Covington and Maxwell H. Covington III individually and as trustees of the Covington Marital Trust to sell agricultural land preservation easement to the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation on 121 acres in Davidsonville, Maryland. Resolution number 4624, resolution approving the application of Alan P. Covington and Maxwell H. Covington III individually and as trustees of the Covington Marital Trust to sell agricultural land preservation easement to the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation on 92.6 acres in Davidsonville, Maryland.
Well done. Thank you. Mr. Hunt, these are all your resolutions. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So these are six resolutions from individuals in the county who applied for, to sell agricultural easements to the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation. There's an extensive application process and then background work that goes into this on the part of the Office of Law. I do have Christina Pompa here from the Office of Planning and Zoning, who's going to talk about the MALF program and these applications. And Christine Nederer from the Office of Law, who went through all of them, checking all the legal checkboxes to make sure that they were compliant with the requirements of the program. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Pompa.
Good evening. Christina Pompa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. Nice to be here again with you. I'm here tonight for these six resolutions for applicants who are purchasing or want to purchase Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation MALF, for short, easements. So there are three ways in this county that we sponsor programs for buying easements. And when we say we're buying easements, we're really purchasing the development rights of property. One is the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation, which comes through the Department of Agriculture. One is our own county program. And the third is the Rural Legacy Program, which comes through the Department of Natural Resources. We have not had this number of resolutions before the council in a year. The last time we had a large number was in 2018, when we had four. Over the last eight years, we've had 12 applications. And not all of them end up getting approved or have easements that get purchased. So what we do is, anybody that's interested, we go ahead and put them through the approval process. And part of the approval process is coming through county council for review and approval, and also a public hearing. We've sent notice out to all the neighboring property owners to let them know that there is a public hearing tonight, so that if they are for or against, they can come out and testify. We do not expect all six of these easement applications to get funded through MALF, but we are hoping that through a combination of the MALF funding, our own county program funding, and Rural Legacy, because we are in the process of processing a grant for Rural Legacy for $891,000, that we are going to be able to purchase, using all three programs, all six of these easements. But we do not expect all six to get done through MALF, because there will not be enough money.
So this is just a step in the process? And what, how would, how would that work?
Well, it's interesting, because it's a little bit of a shell game. Because also, if MALF makes, so the MALF applications actually get ranked, and the ranking is confidential, so I'm not going to talk to you this evening about ranking. But basically, they're going to order the applications, and that's probably how they would hand out offers. But there's absolutely no guarantee that who they offer an easement to is going to accept the easement offer and ultimately have a purchase. Sometimes, like I said, we've had 12 applications come in over the last eight years. Some people have looked at the offers and said, "No, I'm not going to accept that." We actually have two applications this year that had previously come in and turned down offers, but they've come back to the table. We've had, in other years, we had one owner who decided they were going to do solar on their farm instead. We have one that said no and has never come back. But then others have taken the MALF easements. So it's a combination, and we're just, we're trying to get everybody funded, because we do have over $3 million in our capital fund for purchasing easements.
Interesting. Do we have any other questions regarding these six resolutions? No. We're going to open this joint public hearing on resolutions numbers 41-24 through 46-24. Madam Secretary, did we have any testimony from the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We have three pieces that were for resolution number 4224, which have been shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
I don't have anyone signed up in advance for any of these resolutions. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to come forward at this time to bring testimony on any of these MALF resolutions? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public, the joint public hearing on resolutions numbers 41-24 through 46-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of resolutions 41 through 46-24.
Resolution number 4124, resolution approving the application of Stephen Maurice Parks Jr. to sell agricultural land preservation easement to the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation on 94.84 acres in Lothian, Maryland. Resolution number 4224, resolution approving the application of Land Preserve LLC to sell agricultural land preservation easement to the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation on 84.55 acres in Edgewater, Maryland. Resolution number 4324, resolution approving the application of Gary L. Jackson and Julie G. Jackson to sell agricultural land preservation easement to the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation on 59.91 acres in Lothian, Maryland. Resolution number 4424, resolution approving the application of Virginia R. Garrettson, Dean C. Garrettson, and Dean C. Garrettson Jr. to sell agricultural land preservation easement to the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation on 48.79 acres in Lothian, Maryland. Resolution number 4524, resolution approving the application of Alan P. Covington and Maxwell H. Covington III individually and as trustees of the Covington Marital Trust to sell agricultural land preservation easement to the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation on 161, excuse me, 121 acres in Davidsonville, Maryland. Resolution number 4624, resolution approving the application of Alan P. Covington and Maxwell H. Covington III individually and as trustees of the Covington Marital Trust to sell agricultural land preservation easement to the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation on 92.6 acres in Davidsonville, Maryland.
Thank you. We're going to take individual votes. Madam Secretary, please, oh, is there any other questions or, y'all good? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on resolution 41-24.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution number 4124 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on resolution number 42-24.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution number 4224 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on 43-24.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution number 4324 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on resolution 44-24.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution number 4424 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on resolution 45-24.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution number 4524 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on resolution 46-24.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution number 4624 has been adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution 48-24.
Resolution number 4824, resolution approving the terms and conditions of the acquisition of real properties in Gambrels and Millersville, Maryland from Millersville Partners LLC, utilizing funds for the advanced land acquisition capital project.
Mr. Hunt, this is an administration resolution. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Chris Daniels from our Office of Real Estate, Bill Heiser and Kyle Roof from Anarundale County Public Schools, Eric Michelson from our Department of Public Works, and Christine Nederer from the Office of Law. So resolution 4824 approves the terms and conditions for acquisition of property in Gambrels and Millersville from Millersville Partners LLC, utilizing funds from the advanced land acquisition capital project fund. So the county wishes to acquire two contiguous parcels that total 7.9 acres in Gambrels and Millersville. The seven-acre site is located at 1699 Millersville Road, and the contiguous 0.9-acre site is located along 679 State Route 3 North in Gambrels. The two parcels of land are next to the existing Anarundale County Public Schools property located at 1681 Millersville Road. The adjacent public school site currently contains administrative offices for the school's transportation division. So this property is intended to be used as a proposed transportation facility that will combine the county public schools' transportation administrative offices and vehicle maintenance facilities into one location. Currently, these functions are split between the Waterford Bus Lot in Pasadena, and the administrative office is at 1681 Millersville Road. The purchase price for this parcel is $3.5 million, which will be paid from the advanced land acquisition fund, and closing needs to occur no later than December 31st of this year. You may remember, the county council approved in the Board of Ed's capital project budget this past year, money for design for a bus lot. There was not a location in that capital budget project. Public schools have been looking for a number of years for a location for this facility. So if the council approves this acquisition, the seller will, is required to immediately remove several above-ground storage fuel tanks and clean up some contaminated soil. The fuel tanks are not leaking, just for the record. The seller's delivery date, delivery of the site with the environmental concerns addressed is a requirement for condition of the settlement. So the current concept plan, which some of you may have seen, and I want to emphasize that the concept plan is just that, it is a concept plan. It is not the final plan for what the facility will look like at that site. That work is to be done with the money that's in the current capital budget. And any money for actually building a facility at this site would be in a, the capital budget in a future year. So anyway, the current concept plan includes keeping the Wiggly Greer House on-site, which is a historic structure. It was designated as, I'm sorry, locally significant by the Office of Planning and Zoning. I will state that since the project is in the very early design stages, AACPS will assess the condition and integrity of the Wiggly Greer House in the design phase and coordinate with planning and zoning. If council approves, if council approves this resolution, Real Estate Division will proceed with the acquisition of this property in accordance with the county code. And I do want to just clarify a couple things before I turn it over to the public school systems to talk about the need for this facility. I know council members have received some emails from community members in regards to environmental concerns regarding this site. The county public schools would be required under state law to upgrade any stormwater management facilities to comply with state law to address runoff issues in regards to traffic. I believe, let me pull up, I have an email from Karen Henry, that the Route 3, Maryland Route 3, Millersville Road intersection capital improvement project is currently in the design phase. They're currently working on to finish the schematic design phase with a current anticipated advertisement for construction bids in the fall of 2025, with construction beginning in early 2026. And that's to address some of the concerns that you may have heard about traffic at the intersection. With that, I would like to turn it over to Anarundale County Public Schools to talk about this proposed facility.
Thank you, Bill Heiser, Chief Operating Officer for the school system. And thank you, Madam Chair, for introducing this resolution. The resolution is a strategic priority acquisition for us, and will assist our school system to take a significant step forward in modernization. As you know, we want to comply with the new law of zero emissions law for school buses. As you know, we want to comply with the new law of zero emissions law for school buses. And this modernization was also a recommendation of the Prismatic Study dating back to January 2020. We have looked for approximately four to five years for a suitable property. We're very grateful for the county for identifying this property, which sits next to our current transportation property and provides AACPS a great opportunity to consolidate all of our bus lots. Again, this new transportation center will be designed to meet the growing needs of our school district while adhering to the latest environmental standards. Facility will include state-of-the-art amenities to support maintenance and operation of our bus fleet, ensuring that we can provide safe and efficient transportation for our over 84,000 students. One of the key aspects of this project is the incorporation of the EV charging stations, our transportation training center, and parking for 77 buses and 26 alternative vehicles. We've made tremendous strides over the last two years, as this body knows. This is the next step towards modernizing and doing even better for our students and families. And as part of our commitment to sustainability and reducing our carbon footprint, the new transportation center will be equipped to support the new electric buses that we'll be purchasing. Our current transportation building was built in 1921 and is outdated and no longer meets the demands of our growing student population. And so, by investing in this property, we're ensuring that our transportation infrastructure is capable of supporting the needs of our students, staff for years to come. I also would like to reiterate that AACPS has a strong track record of complying with county permitting requirements and environmental regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. How long has this property been on the market?
Not exactly sure how long it's been on the market. We reached out to the, to the owners about a year ago and started negotiations.
Okay. And the appraisal that our appraiser provided is that the property is worth just under $3.3 million, but we're going to pay $3.5 million.
You're correct, yes.
Why?
We had negotiated the price several months before the appraisal was done. It's, it's not an exact science in figuring out the price of undeveloped or raw land. So, we were...
I, I get that. I mean, I bought a house a long time ago, and it came in, the appraisal was like $15,000 less than what the agreed sales price was. So, we had to go back and renegotiate the contract because the bank wouldn't loan more than the appraised value. The only difference here is the bank is the Anne Arundel County taxpayers, who we're supposed to be the ones, sort of is the fiduciaries of. So, I guess what I'm just not clear on is why we're overpaying for a piece of property that our independent appraiser says is only worth $3.3 million.
I wouldn't necessarily say that we're overpaying for the property. We only had the one appraisal done. If we had another appraiser, appraisal done, the value may have come in closer to our, our sales price.
Okay. And last question for now. Are we only required to do one appraisal when we buy property?
It depends upon the, the price of the property or the cost of the property.
Okay, because I remember when we bought that Quiet Waters Reserve parcel, I thought we had two appraisals on that, if I remember. We paid, I don't know, $8 million, $9 million for that property back in 2019, something like that. I feel like there were two appraisals then. Was that?
You, you, you may be correct there. I just wasn't here in 2019.
Mr. Hunt.
If I may, Madam Chair, I would just note that ESTAT values the property at $3.75 million, or $3,775,000 right now. So, we're, we're in, in the middle between the appraisal and ESTAT.
And Maryland law says that ESTAT values are not to be used as a calculation of value, at least not in a divorce case, that's for sure, in family law.
So, we do have, there is code language. We cannot pay more than 10% above an appraised value, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. And this property is currently zoned C2, is that correct?
Yes, I believe the, the seven-acre site is zone C2.
Yeah. Madam Chair. Ms., oh, excuse me, Madam, Ms., Ms. Feedler.
Thank you. Is AC, AACPS exempt from zoning law?
We're exempt from some zoning laws, but we comply with building code and grading codes.
Okay. And the reason, Madam Chair, may I follow?
Of course.
The reason I'm asking that is knowing that the property is zone C2. In our zoning chart, unless this is not up to date, I believe it is, I don't think we've passed a school bus facilities bill in quite a while, school bus facilities are not permitted in C2. Is that correct?
We would be exempt from that.
Thank you.
Yes.
But conference centers are allowed in C2. So, there are a lot of things that are allowed in commercial districts. Both the county and the school system are exempt from certain parts of Article 17 and 18. Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. I'm curious, at any point, was AACPS or anyone from the administration aware that this property is in the Jabez Branch watershed?
Yes, I'm aware of that.
But, I mean, were you aware when you started looking at this property for, for this purpose?
We didn't specifically look out what watershed it was in, if that was the question.
Because this is a priority, Jabez and Magathie are the two designated priority watersheds in our general development plan. You know, protection of this watershed is, you know, we've already said in our, in our general development plan that this is a priority. And so, I'm curious if that came up at any point. It's, it's troubling to, you know, imagine, I, I certainly understand the needs of the school system, believe me, I do. But to take, you know, a seven, closer to eight acre site, when you combine the two parcels, that is going to be used for, you know, transportation, storage, so you know it's going to be a large amount of impervious surface that's really relevant to the conversation about the location of this particular facility. So, I'm just curious when, you know, in the conversation, when in, you know, in this negotiation, did it become apparent that this was part of, in, in the Jabez? And did anyone ever raise the fact that this was a priority in the general development plan?
I, I think it's important to note that the Jabez branch that is parallel to the property is really an ephemeral stream at that point, because it's so early in the branch that it's not full of water all the time. It's only full of water when it rains.
Right. But any water that does go in that ephemeral stream is going to end up in the Jabez. And so, that's the, you know, that's the real concern, is that, you know, the restoration on the part of the, I guess, I can't remember which branch.
The third.
The third branch. You know, one of the things that's really critical is that the water in that branch stays cold. And in the summertime, when we have rain and you have an ephemeral stream, and that ephemeral stream flows into the Jabez branch, you are certainly not getting cold water, you're getting warm water. And that's one of the critical conditions for this type of stream, for the, you know, for the type of stream that it is and the type of wildlife that it accommodates.
So, the, the ephemeral stream that we're talking about is Jabez tributary number two, not number three. It's early in the headwaters. We've produced projects really close to both critical areas of the bay and streams, including the Old Mill Complex and several others, where we've gone through the permitting process, complied with the requirements of the permitting process, and delivered a successful project. And I'm confident we can do the same on this.
I think the, I think the problem is, though, we know that the requirements, both in state law and county law, are not going to be sufficient to protect the stream. And I'm not just talking about Jabez III, the one that, you know, has the most recent restoration. It's the entire Jabez, you know, the entire Jabez, Jabez complex of streams that is, you know, identified for priority, you know, care in our general development plan. So, you know, regardless of which branch it's going into, you know, eventually it's all going down to, it all ends up in the same, it all ends up in the Severn River.
That's the same for any drainage area in any part of the county. It's going to associate with some stream tributary, and it's going to go into one of the waterways and into the bay.
Right. But this is one of two that was identified specifically for special protection in our general development plan, this one and the Magathie. And so, I just, you know, it's, there's, I'll just add that, you know, we have a particular type of trout that has already been eliminated from that stream. It has been reintroduced once, and, you know, in part because of the restoration that has recently taken place in Branch III, there is a possibility that could be reintroduced again. And that this, and this is the only location, you know, in this part of Maryland. You know, there are mountain locations where you have cold water streams that this type of trout, you know, exists. But this is, this is the last location, you know, in the Chesapeake region where this type of trout, where this brook trout exists. And so, you know, any additional pressure on the stream complex, you know, is just very concerning, especially when we know that the regulations don't really address, you know, water temperature, and that's one of the critical features for, you know, for protect, for protect, for protecting this particular type of brook trout.
Well, just as this project will comply with state regulations, so will the MD3 project that State Highway DPW are pursuing. They're both in the same tributary, same drainage area.
But if we need to go beyond what's in those regulations, can we count on AACPS to go, you know, beyond what those, what those are? Because they don't address, the, the state regulations don't address this type of protection. You know, they don't provide that level of protection that's needed for this stream.
I guess I would need to know specifics of what you're asking us to comply with.
Yeah, I need to, I mean, I'm not an expert on this. I just know, and Eric Michelson looks like he's ready to chime in.
Yeah. Thanks, Eric Michelson, Deputy Director, DPW. I guess what, what I would say is, given that the property's zone C2, it could be intensively developed by a private sector entity, you know, if it were purchased immediately. And so, what I'd say is that, to a certain extent, I think, given that we've got the school system here working with the county, we do have this unique opportunity to say, let's go above and beyond sort of what the minimal standards may be in terms of the county protection. Let the school system get what it needs from a programmatic use out of that site, but then, you know, make the site a demonstration project because of the unique sensitivities of the Jabez watershed and, you know, manage additional water there, perhaps do some additional tree plantings. They've already got solar or electric plans, I understand, in the works for that site as part of this effort. And so, I think, you know, one way or another, the property can be pretty intensively developed under the existing standards. The question just is, does the county or does the school system have control and a commitment to go above and beyond, given the unique sensitivity of the watershed? In my, I haven't had a lot of conversations with the school system on this, but in talking with them earlier, they seemed like they were interested in, in doing that if this were to get purchased.
I guess I would, you know, be interested to hear more about, you know, the level of commitment that you are, because, you know, as you know, we did make a substantial, I think, $8 million is the price tag of the investment that we just completed for the Branch III. But at the same time, you know, if we were to create an overlay that's like, that's called for in the general development plan, we, you know, we'd have a private entity that couldn't be exempt from it, whereas, you know, AACPS could be potentially exempt from, you know, additional requirements that we have. So, that's why I'm really seeking, you know, assurances that we, that AACPS is willing to go above and beyond to help us, you know, protect this investment, but also help protect the larger stream ecosystem. And I know that might not be, I mean, maybe that's something, you know, I was considering requesting a hold for the bill so we could find out a little bit more about what those requirements would be, and to see if we could come to some sort of agreement about, you know, you know, so it's, so we've got, you know, a real commitment.
Can, can we talk a little bit about the timeline? This is just the, this would be the resolution to, for the county to purchase the, the property? And then, what, what happens next?
From the school system standpoint, we still need to hire an engineer and an architect to fully design it. Again, this is just a concept plan. I can't provide you details on where, where locations of stormwater management, what the calculations are at this point. We need to hire someone. And then, at that point, we would go through the design process, schematic design, DD design, and then ultimately, construction development, where we would put it out to bid and construct it.
Because this project is not in your FY26 CIP, so this isn't, this is in future years.
The FY26 CIP has a request for construction of this project.
Oh, it does?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we received design funding in FY25, and that's what we would be using to contract with our architect engineer.
Okay. Okay. If, if the county, if this council was to vote to acquire this property, and from the time we acquire the property to the time maybe in overlay, could that overlay incorporate some sort of special provision about this property?
I think it's important to remember that we still have to have it approved by the IAC.
Oh, right.
And any requirements on the property have to be approved at that point by them.
Oh, interesting. And I'm still, do you mind if I? Sure. Interject? My concern is that, I mean, just given the nature of, you know, the planned use, regardless of what the ultimate design is, it's, you know, I think it's impossible to argue that we're not going to have a pretty significant amount of impervious surface added to, you know, this area in, in the Jabez watershed. So, you know, I'm not even sure, and I would like maybe a little bit of time to find out, is it even possible to create a stormwater management plan that would protect the Jabez, given the significant amount of impervious surface? And so, that's maybe one of the reasons that I will be requesting a hold. Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Shifting gears just a little bit, so for the bus lot, for the amount of buses, cars, and vans that will be coming in and out on a daily basis, I know it's really early in the process, but I'm sure you have an idea generally how lots work, could you articulate approximately what hours of the day these vehicles would be traveling to and from?
So, typically, most of these buses and alternative vehicles, which has, have been very successful, gets on the road around 6:00 AM. That is assuming, and so, 6:00 AM, obviously, through the school day and then concluding, some of these alternative vehicles are going to non-public locations out of county, transporting our special needs students. They'll return somewhere in the neighborhood of 5:30 to 6 o'clock, if they're traveling pretty far. And that's all taking into account that, that's based on the school start times as they are right now.
Right. So, during morning and evening rush hour, effectively, on Route 3? Thank you.
Ms. Hummer.
Yes. So, a couple of things, just, I want to clarify. So, the existing central transportation office building that is on that, on the current Mark Millersville Road property, that would be replaced under this for the long-term?
Would either be replaced or renovated.
Yes. Well, I do know from the Prismatic Report, it was rated as poor and not cost beneficial to rehab or renovate, were their exact words. So, I'm saying replace, but that could be different. I know this is something that has been a need for a long time. It was a priority in that Prismatic Report. For those who don't know, the Waterford property, the, where the repairs and things are done, was rated as noticeably primitive, is what it said, that there were not sufficient room or things to actually service the vehicles that we have. And also, that the Waterford property we don't own, that AACPS does not own, it leases, and so, that is not a long-term benefit. So, there really does need to be a school system-owned property that can manage everything and have a central place. So, this would be a way that would, that Waterford property, which, you know, hopefully will not go away before we can move it somewhere else, could all be consolidated into one spot to have. So, I'm very, the, the need for this is really great. Y'all are, y'all said that, but I want to stress that to people, how kind of urgent it is to move forward on moving this facility to a new location, and also make it a facility that actually meets the needs of the system right now. So, I'm very supportive of us having a consolidated property to have, to have everywhere. I'm glad that this has moved up the priority list, that we can do this, because we don't want to suddenly be left with nowhere to park our buses or nowhere to repair them. So, thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One of the things that you mentioned about this facility is that it's going to help you with the zero emissions buses that you're going to have. So, how does the county school system interplay with the private bus vendors and the job that they're doing? What's going to be the impact from this new facility vis-à-vis the contracts that we have with private bus companies?
So, this facility primarily is our own buses that we own, and we, for example, we've been given approval to purchase six electric buses. When we think about kind of broad-based what's happening across the state, we feel like we're taking a responsible approach towards those electric buses. There's a lot of reports that come out in terms of how timely you can or cannot get those buses, and so, we're, we're a little cautious on doing that, but I think responsibly so. In terms of our contractors, they would not be utilizing this bus lot. They have their own bus lots, but we're working hand and glove to try and educate those and identifying grants for those private contractors. identifying grants for those private contractors so that they can move forward with their EV buses.
Jugg, just to confirm, this is not intended to be a facility that is going to supplant the private vendors in any way. This is just to manage our fleet.
Not at all. In fact, Dr. Bedell has been really clear in meeting, he's met at least four times now with our contractors in person, and has offered his unconditional support to make sure that we support those private providers and contractors. Thank you.
So this property is relatively centrally located and being right off Route 3. Is there anyone at the table that can talk about, someone mentioned the road improvement project for, for Route 3. Do we have someone who can speak to that? Oh, Mr. Braun is coming forward. This is in that stretch of improvement?
Yeah, the, um...
State your name and address.
I'm sorry, David Braun with the Department of Public Works.
Thank you.
The work that was started with the Millersville Park property identified the failure at the Route 3 Millersville Road intersection, and we've been working to develop a project that SHA will accept to address that. We got that, and we're working now through the design process, as Ethan said in the summary earlier. This project, the, the school project, was not a part of this traffic study that identified that improvement. Typically, SHA would require some form of traffic study from this project when they go through there, so it would be built on to what we're doing with the current project.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions at this time before we open the public hearing? We'll now open the public hearing on Resolution 48-24. Madam Secretary, did we have any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, we received 11 pieces, which have been shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
We do have four individuals signed up ahead of time. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. I have Deborah Weller, Don Weller, Nita Satina, and Elizabeth Sroka. No idea if that's right.
I'm representing Old Millersville Neighborhood Association. We are requesting the council to oppose this resolution or at a minimum postpone approval until the fiscal, traffic, and environmental impacts are fully understood. We believe that once the impacts of research will be obvious, this is not the site for a transportation facility. Traffic is already bad, but I won't, you already know that. Exactly how 75 buses, 26 vans, and 182 cars enter and leave the property? Exiting onto Route 3 will cause extensive congestion, and Millersville Road has no room for these vehicles to merge into the traffic. Route 3 Millersville intersection is already one of the most dangerous intersections on this, on the Route 3 corridor. Can you imagine what it's going to be like? I don't want to. The site is adjacent, as mentioned, to a tributary to Jasper's branch, which is being restored by the Coalition of State, County, and Private Partners at more than $9 million. This tributary is a mapped, integral stream. It is integral to the restoration and protection of Jasper's watershed. Headwater streams are the most ecologically important. So what is the environmental impact of increasing the impervious cover with wall-to-wall parking? What is the potential for oil and grease and gas runoff? The concept land has stormwater managed in the required 100-foot buffer. Does it make sense to buy this site for 3.5 to negate spending millions for restoration? What are the optics? The county has touted the restoration at the ribbon-cutting downstream, but is now doing the opposite upstream. The environmental site assessment states this site is served by public water and sewer. It is not. How did this affect the plan for building the facility? Once built, it's hard to...
Ms. Weller. Thank you. Mr. Weller?
Thank you. I'm Don Weller. I live at 120 Linda Lane, and I've approved this message. Since 2020, the Old Millersville Neighborhood Association has fought a planned strip mall at this site. County and state officials also reviewed that plan, and their wisdom is relevant now to this plan. OPZ rejected the strip mall preliminary plan for problems that are also in the transit facility concept plan. They noted that county code prohibits development within 100 feet of the adjacent stream. The transit facility, facility concept plan puts stormwater managed structures where that buffer should be. OPZ noted that the small parcel of the property is Zoned RLD, not C2, and the county code prohibits access roads and parking in that district. The transit facility puts a parking lot there. OPZ noted that the main house is on the Maryland inventory of historic properties. County code requires preserving the house on its own lot and maintaining the view from the road to the house. The transit facility plan paves the front yard. SHA also reviewed the strip mall plan. They noted that entrances on primary highways can't be in the influence zone of a dedicated turn lane. The Route 3 enters that the transit facility connects directly to the right turn lane. Last week, the county executive and Councilwoman Rodian and others celebrated a $9 million restoration of the Jabez branch. But such restorations often fail because of new land development upstream. Don't let the county be the evil developer that undoes this expensive accomplishment by disrupting a headwater tributary. We ask the administration and the council, please slow down and think carefully about this plan. Before you buy the property, make sure you understand the environmental and traffic impacts. And please follow the damn rules. Respect the constraints. OPZ correctly opposed.
Can we go to our next, Ms. Satina?
Good evening. My name is Nita Satina. I reside at 1255 Crummel Avenue in Annapolis. I'm here representing myself and the Center for Ecosystem Recovery, which is a nonprofit conservation organization. We focus on restoring some of Maryland's most imperiled ecosystems and living resources. In Anarondle County, we are working to preserve and restore the county's only Class 3 cold-water brook trout stream, the Jabez branch. My testimony today is given with all due respect to the needs of the public school system. I listened to their testimony, and we're not here to criticize or comment on that. My comments are to share concerns associated with the resolution and the selection of this particular site for a transportation facility in the Jabez branch at the headwaters of the South Fork. We are supportive of the county's acquisition of the property. Because it is Zone C2, it is open to intensive development, and the county's acquisition could lead to more positive outcomes for this site in a very sensitive watershed. However, we are concerned that the current concept development plan proposed for this site will introduce a scale of impervious surface that is significant in a watershed that the county's GDP 2040 identified as a priority for special protection, as did the Severn River Commission. We are respectfully asking that additional consideration be given, if possible, by adding language to this resolution. Once the property is required, that the project design and planning will minimize the parking facility environmental impacts to the maximum extent possible, because the 2007 stormwater management permit... Oh, shoot.
Thank you, ma'am.
Two minutes goes fast.
Ms. Sroka.
Good evening. My name is Libby Sroka. I live at 1022 Arundel Station Road in Millersville, and I am here to speak out against this resolution. I think the thing that bothers me the most is that everyone, everyone in capital letters knows that this is a failed intersection. I sat in this traffic tonight from Bowie and south, totally bumper to bumper. I walk the South Shore Trail every day. I walk to the end where the parking lot is for the South Shore Trail, and there are problems there in the entrance for that current education building and the parking lot. When we try to cross the crosswalk from the parking lot to the trail, people stop on Millersville Road to enter into the Board of Education's property, which is dangerous in its own right. It backs up traffic. And I can't, I can't fathom all those buses, the vans, and the cars coming in and out at that intersection. And unfortunately, I do not have a lot of confidence in improvements that will be made further down at St. Stevens Church Road to alleviate these problems, nor do I have confidence in the improvements that will be made on Millersville Road. I just think it's really unfortunate that all this development has been made in the middle, and every time, in the median strip, we have a Dunkin' Donuts, we have a Starbucks, it is unbridled. And every time we express a concern about it, they say, oh, that's the other administration. Thank you, it kind of executive shoe. But guess what? This is on Pittman's administrative group, and we're just pushing to pave everything. And I just don't see this as a proper use for a failed traffic.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on amendment on Resolution 48-24 at this time? Seeing no further movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution 48-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 48-24.
Resolution Number 4824, Resolution Improving the Terms and Conditions of the Acquisition of Real Properties in Gambros and Millersville, Maryland from Millersville Partners LLC, Utilizing Funds from the Advanced Land Acquisition Capital Project.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to hold the vote until our November 18th meeting.
I was going to ask a question, but the motion takes priority if it gets a second.
I can withdraw my motion temporarily, so you can ask the question if you like.
Thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. So looking at the concept plan, I mean, just continuing to see the impact of this, so it looks like on the current spot, that's 5.1 acres, there are 24 parking spots. This is proposing, and I assume that's bus parking, so this is going to 75 bus spots, so you're going to triple that? Is that right?
I believe that's the concept plan. I think the school system might be able to speak to that better, but I would just reiterate that this, this is simply the concept plan. It was to make sure, it was to, it's...
Everything starts as a concept.
Exactly. No, I, I understand that, but it's, it's to look at the property and determine if it could accommodate what the school system needs.
Yeah, but what you're saying is the school system needs 75 spots. There's 25 on the existing, they want to triple it. You've got 58 parking spots, it's going to take it to 182. That's more than tripling that number. And then the RLD site is going to put another 26 van spots in RLD. So I mean, it's a pretty significant expansion of parking and a dense expansion, if you will. And then the entirety of the stormwater is just, I guess, the back of the property that sort of abuts the existing property. I mean, I get that you may have to change the plan, but like, yeah, the school system is looking at this, as most developers do, and saying, how can I max out my concepts for everything that I think I need? That's what you all have done here, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So if I could ask a question or two? So the school system has determined that the property, the acreage, will meet the, the need?
Correct. We were specifically looking for a property between 10 and 15 acres. Combining this with our current property, we get to around 13.
I see. So the plan is to use property you already own as well?
Correct. So we would use what was formerly the Student Service Building, now is the Transportation Building. We would use that parcel along with the two adjacent parcels to combine to make the transportation facility.
Okay. Okay. Are there any questions?
Ms. Rodian. I'd like to bring back that motion to hold the vote on Resolution 4824 until our November 18th meeting.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to hold Resolution 48-24 until the November 18th meeting. Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodian.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative, the motion to hold the vote on Resolution 4824 until November 18th has passed. We will bring this resolution back on November 18th, 2024, and before we move forward in this meeting, I was informed that we failed to get a motion and a second on Amendment Number...
Amendment Number 5 to Bill 7524.
All right, so walk me through this, so we do this right?
We will do it like it didn't happen before, because we are not allowed to take a vote unless there is a motion and a second.
Okay.
So I will read it, and we'll just do it all again.
Madam Secretary, please read in Amendment Number 5 to Bill 75-24.
Amendment Number 5, this amendment provides that any use lawfully in existence in a mixed-use district prior to the effective date of this ordinance may continue under certain circumstances.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 5 to Bill 75-24. Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodian.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative, Amendment Number 5 to Bill 7524 has been adopted.
Okay. Is there any other business any council member would like to bring before the county council at this time? May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The county council is adjourned until Tuesday, November 12th, 2024, at 9:00 AM for our council work session here in our chambers. Thank you, everybody. Have a good and safe night.